Good afternoon, everyone. It is four ten P M here at fifteen twenty Market Street. And we are here for a public hearing pertaining to the city's pro housing grant proposal in accordance with HUD's citizen participation requirements and to continue our ongoing dialogue about the city's housing strategy.
With the public. So just a little roadmap, we're going to be talking today about the pro housing grant program, about the eligible uses for funds, the application process, and how you can provide your public comments. Then we're going to provide an overview of the city's proposal, starting with the issues that have informed our approach, our strategic framework, the work that we're building on, and the specific activities that we are proposing to fund. And then finally, we'll open it up for public comments and questions. So a little bit of background about pro housing, this is actually the second round of pro housing. It's a HUD program first established in twenty-three and then funded again this year through the twenty twenty-four Consolidated Appropriations Act, formerly called the Pathways to Removing Obstacles to Housing Program. And it's built on the C D B G chassis, on the C D B G statutory and regulatory framework, which means that there's strict compliance requirements. And it's fundamentally a grant program designed to support innovative activities that remove barriers to affordable housing. And so there's a list here of some eligible activities, including the constant. But what I want to talk about actually is the awards that were made last year because that's where we learn a little bit what HUD is looking for. And there were an array of awards made for both programs designed to lower barriers, such as reducing permitting barriers, investing into zoning reform. A variety of cities were funded for these sorts of programs. But then also, there were a lot of awards made for innovative housing production programs, including forgivable and revolving loan programs and a variety of other programs focused on accessory dwelling units, on energy efficient housing, and other forms of innovative housing production. So what you'll see from our proposal today is that we try to do both and propose both a series of planning efforts designed to reduce permitting and regulatory barriers, but also a program to expand the supply of affordable housing. And something else I'll note is that we did do a debrief with HUD following our first proposal last year. And we learned that we were within a few points of being awarded. And some of the feedback that we received was that we needed to be a little more focused and clarify our vision. And that's what we've intended to hear. You'll note if you followed along last year that we struck a number of programs. Last year, we were really ambitious. We wanted to do a lot of different things, including an energy efficient program, a historic housing program, site development program, and others. Here, we've really concentrated those implementation programs into a single more robust program. So a little bit about the engagement that we've done around this work. It's built upon a foundation of ongoing engagement that the Jones administration engages with, with partners and stakeholders across our city, including the stimulus advisory board that informed the city's first ARPA appropriations, the mayor's youth council, the reparations commission, the L G B T Q I A advisory board, all of which provide input and guidance regarding the city's priorities, and all of which have repeatedly emphasized the extraordinary importance of investing and expanding the city's investment into housing. And we'll talk a little bit more about the data behind some of the challenges facing groups across the city with respect to housing. We've also held a series of public hearings and town halls. As part of the city's ARPA prioritization process, we received, we issued a survey that received over five thousand responses. That's over one percent of city residents who provided their input. And again, housing and neighborhood transformation rose to the top. And that's again, something we'll be talking about is how in St. Louis, there's no contradiction between affordable housing and developing markets and building markets. In fact, affordable housing is a critical tool that can allow us to build markets across the city. We've done community needs surveys, prioritization surveys, and more recently have been engaged in a series of strategic planning processes, including our strategic land use plan, which you'll hear a little bit more about later, as well as our twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine consolidated plan. This is a plan that we're required to put together for HUD, which identifies our funding priorities for the next five years. And will be actually, we've convened a community advisory committee to help us pull this together. It will include a market value analysis that includes a ton of data on the city's diverse housing markets. And it'll also include a series of objectives in terms of the outputs that we want to produce with federal funds, and we'll be releasing it actually in the coming weeks for public comment as well. We've also done a variety of direct outreach to specific stakeholders and partners as part of our pro housing application and are continuously conducting action planning, which includes an interdepartmental working group focused on housing, as well as neighborhood planning and dialogue with grassroots community groups. What the other elements that have informed our engagement is that there's been so much work already done to date on affordable housing in the city of St. Louis. One apt starting point, even though the history goes back far longer, is segregation in St. Louis dismantling the divide, which shows really clearly. It was put together by Dr. Purnell and other authors really starkly how our segregated housing market, how segregated housing markets are in the city today, and how this is a outcome of intentional policies, discriminatory policies, including redlining, restrictive covenants, appraisal gaps that persist to this day, quote unquote, urban renewal policies that demolish predominantly black neighborhoods, white flight, suburbanization, highways, the list goes on. And it's a foundational point to the way that we think about the challenge in this moment, which is taking that same degree of intentionality that was behind the discriminatory policies and using that to reverse those generations of disinvestment and rebuild markets. I've talked already about our consolidated plan. I'll mention our regional affordable housing report card, which showed St. Louis failing in several important respects with respect to expanding access to quality, safe, affordable, stable housing. The Economic Justice Action Plan is also foundational to the Jones administration's approach, stands for a few key principles. One is that equity is a precondition to growth. Equity is not just a moral imperative, although it is a moral imperative. But we cannot grow as a city, or for that matter, as a region, while half the city is left behind. In order to grow, and there's so much data showing that segregated, fractured, unequal cities stagnate across the country. And so there's a lot of evidence to demonstrate that in order to grow, we must prioritize equity. That's one point. A second point that the Economic Justice Action Plan stands for is that in order for that growth to be equitable and sustainable, we need to put people first. And never forget that it's not just about transforming the built environment, but it's about lifting up communities. Our City of St. Louis Affordable Housing Report gave us a series of principles to inform our affordable housing strategy, including being focused. We know that the need dramatically outweighs the available resources, and so we need to be extremely targeted and strategic, being asset based in terms of building off of assets, including schools, parks, transit, and ensuring we're building housing close to there, being inclusive in our approach, building housing that is resilient and high quality. And finally, being collaborative, that in order to do this work, the city is just a small piece of the puzzle. If you look at the overall investment into housing going on across the city, between just between twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen, the state, through LIHTC and other federal programs, put over ten times the amount of funding that the city didn't. So in order to have maximum impact, we really need to be collaborative, not just between the city and the state, but also with our developer partners and community stakeholders. The Strategic Land Use Plan, again, you'll hear more about from Miriam. I should have introduced, by the way, ourselves. My name is Noel. I lead the city's Community Development Administration. I'm joined on my left by Miriam Keller, City Planning Executive for the Planning Department, and on my right by Dylan Halliam, the city's housing strategist at S L D C. And you'll hear more about them, about our strategy moving, as we move forward. Next slide. This data here really, again, is foundational to our approach in that it shows, first of all, that the city has about a hundred and forty thousand households, of whom about eighty thousand are tenants, about sixty thousand are homeowners, and that nearly half of our tenants are cost burdened, and that collectively they pay about a hundred and seventy million dollars more than they can afford in rent each year. It also shows that our homeowners are also cost burdened, about fifteen, twenty-five percent of homeowners are cost burdened. And honestly, this is an underestimate because it looks mostly at mortgage utility costs and property taxes, not at the actual cost of maintaining a home. So the truth is that an even larger fraction of homeowners are cost burdened. And so we can see here a few different challenges that the city is facing. There, there's challenges to accessing affordable homeownership, clearly. There's also challenges for the tens of thousands of families who are allocating more than they can afford towards making rent, and that's money that's not going towards childcare, towards food, towards healthcare, et cetera. And finally, there's about ten to fifteen thousand households a year in the city of St. Louis that are evicted and that don't have access to stable housing, period. And out of this population comes also the one to two thousand households who are unhoused at any given point. So we can see a variety, a spectrum of different needs, and we're committed to investing in housing as diverse as our city to address these diverse needs. That's why we have committed over two hundred and fifty million dollars towards various housing initiatives, including twenty-two million dollars towards rental and utility assistance to help prevent homelessness and eviction. Another fifty million dollars towards shelter, tiny homes, bridge and rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing, again, to prevent homelessness. Another one hundred and seven million dollars to, towards the production and preservation of affordable housing, which includes both for sale and rental housing, as well as forty-eight million dollars towards stabilizing vacant buildings, which is the first step towards placing them on the path to full rehabilitation and turning them into quality housing, for sale or rental. Twenty million dollars to dramatically expand the city's home repair program, which serves low to moderate income homeowners, helps keep seniors in their homes, prevent vacancy, and prevent our neighborhoods from fraying, and helps keep the fabric of our city intact. Thanks to these funds, we have dramatically expanded the city's home repair program over the past few years from about a hundred and fifty homes a year prior to the commitment of ARPA funds to over three hundred homes last year and looking at being on track for about four hundred this year. And finally, homeownership assistance, including down payment assistance program called Home S T L, which can provide up to fifty thousand dollars of down payment assistance to first time homeowners. And so again, you see in that array of funding commitments, commitments that touch on the diverse array of challenges that we're facing. Next slide. And focusing in on the roughly a hundred million dollars that the city has committed towards affordable housing production and preservation, you can see that that is actually leveraging about eight hundred and ten dollars into the development of thirty-five hundred units. And these include. If you compare, this represents a dramatic expansion and diversification of the city's housing production pipeline. Between twenty nineteen, the city subsidized about one thousand units, so we're currently subsidizing three times as many. But furthermore, it's a diversification because between twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen, only sixty-five of those units were for sale, only thirty-nine of those units were under thirty percent A M I. Conversely, today, we have nearly a thousand units in development under thirty percent A M I, and also over two hundred in development which are for sale. With that, actually, one last slide. I also want to note that these investments have a strong economic justice layer on them, meaning that as we invest, we seek to reverse decades of disinvestment. And, and we're looking at these maps that show us where in the city have the highest rates of. This map is actually based on over ten factors, including income, life expectancy, violent crime rates, health outcomes, access to educational outcomes, access to internet, and more. And really is designed to calibrate resources to reach the individuals most in need. So with that, I'll turn it over now to Miriam to talk a little bit about the work that we're building on.
Yeah, understandably, one of the questions that HUD asks us to address in our proposal is, you know, what have you done so far? And Noel has described with a lot of great detail all of the investments that are being made and the funding commitments that are underway in support of the housing vision captured by the Economic Justice Action Plan and other documents he's describing. Some other things, though, that we've made some headway on, our policy changes over the last, I'll roughly say, five to eight years, including some recent ones. So source of income protections as a measure of expanding access to quality affordable housing for people using various assistance programs to pay their rent, tenant right to counsel, of course, as a measure of protection against people vulnerable to eviction or other abusive practices by property owners, short term rental regulation, a lot of progress in this last year around establishing a better permitting and kind of licensing program for short term rentals, both to establish more accountability and a means by which to make sure these properties are operating in a manner that doesn't, you know, cause problems for neighborhoods. But also several parts of that policy package do help to mitigate the saturation of short term rentals in certain neighborhoods, which, you know, especially in higher demand neighborhoods, these are the places where we see the most short term rental activity in the city. And of course, that does remove some measure of supply from the housing market. So at some really valuable steps there, the impacted tenants fund, ensuring that people have support when they are impacted by various, you know, whether it's eviction or other changes. This year, the Transit Oriented Development Zoning Text Amendment or zoning amendment to our code, trying to reduce barriers, particularly for housing development, but also for core monies like groceries and restaurants in areas around the proposed Green Line stations or North Side, South Side metro link light rail expansion. And then special residential uses, nothing yet on that front yet passed, but a lot of really great discussion and dialogue last year. And actually, tomorrow night at the Planning Commission, an updated zoning proposal, zoning reform proposal for special residential uses, including but not limited to shelters and transitional housing. Tomorrow night, this will be introduced to the Planning Commission for their review and potential recommendation. Next slide. So policy changes, also a lot of community neighborhood planning with the goal of, in partnership with community and with kind of these broad citywide goals at hand, trying to establish a stronger framework for policy and developments that is established in partnership with community members. So sort of in the process of getting back up and going, neighborhood planning in the neighborhoods around the future N G A West Campus, a lot of active comprehensive planning at the citywide level, the Strategic Land Use Plan focusing on land use, there's Transportation Mobility Plan, folks, of course, on transportation and mobility and sustainability, all of these three, these three things knitting together or to offer the city a little bit more of a clear blueprint for our, the evolution of our built environment. And then the Plan S T L Neighborhood Planning Initiative, just last week, launched neighborhood planning in the Ville, Greater Ville, and Kingsway East neighborhoods, and will be launching neighborhood planning in the coming months in an additional five neighborhoods, all focused up in North Side in concert with the Economic Justice Action Plan. Next slide. And a fourth piece of, I think, the story as we see it is that the federal government is in the process of making some pretty, you know, major investments in the St. Louis region. So this is a map that tries to put some of these things all together on the same page. So those orange outlines reflect the Economic Justice Action Plan demonstration areas, the green lines, the greenways planned, and some actually complete or under construction as of last week, super exciting. The planned North Side, South Side Green Line or Light Rail Expansion is something where the city and by state together actively seeking the federal government's partnership, and we want to be intentional as we plan around that. And then this foreshadows a piece of what we're proposing to do with this application. But in those pink outlines, those are all of the eighteen different local historic districts in the city, each with their own regulations for new construction, and then in almost all but, I believe, one district renovation as well. So taken all together, a really exciting framework for kind of the possibility in our city. And a lot of what we're proposing in this application is trying to accelerate the, the investment and kind of continue and build on the investment that Noel described, and with the regulatory picture, try to better sync up the whole host of development and land use regulations we have, better sync those up with the goals that we have established in partnership with community through these planning processes. So that has to do, I think, first and foremost with zoning, but also local historic district regulations as a kind of minor extension of our land use regulation system as a city. Next slide, please.
So even with two hundred and fifty million dollars of investment, even with all our planning processes and all of the programs that we've deployed, we're still stuck with a lot of barriers, right? And as the nation, we are in a housing crisis, and so we need to treat it like a housing crisis. And some of the barriers that are impacting us, as well as the nation, we are hoping to tackle and we are hoping to look at. And so some of our local barriers remain from three different lenses, right? The first lens is through strategic implementation, getting the work done, and we'll talk a little bit more as the slides go, but strategic implementation, zoning and land use barriers that you've just heard that we're working on right now, and as well as capacity and communication, right? Getting the work out and increasing people to help us do the work. And so with that being said, the strategic implementation barriers, right? Inflation, labor supply, and chain shortages, right? And construction costs and things like that really take a toll on our small scale developers and our community minded developers, right? Being able to meet, meet ends and being able to raise capital for their capital stack. Inflexible, unaffordable, inflexible affordability policies still remain, right? Being able to help a deal go through, help a deal pencil, or even giving station to prepare affordable housing, procure affordable housing, development opportunities, unpredictability in the site process, right? One of our programs calls for the cleaning or remediation of dirt or land or a bad dirt on a property. And what happens is we usually see additional structures, right? And so that's an additional cost for our developers. So what does that look like? And then again, increasing our developer and contractor capacity is tougher and tougher for our smaller scale developers, or even developers in general, right? To make a deal go through. So how can we encourage community developers? How can we support our local contractors and increasing their capacity to make it easier to do the, the, the things that we want to see happen? Along with, along with the strategic implementation, the zoning and land use policy barriers that we've talked about, right? Zoning barriers, restrictive zoning, the, the, the land use, not allowing us to do certain opportunities, not allowing us to potentially even capture density, things like that, or even do productive uses that we want to see are still a barrier for us. And so with our strategic land use plan and other opportunities, we are looking to explore that. Again, over reliance on variances, again, that kind of goes back to the, the zoning barriers, right? Developers have ideas that they want to do that may not be advantageous, and so they have to go through different processes to make that, that opportunity work. Historic district regulations, that so many stringent rules that have to go into, for good reason, that go into the property rehabilitation development in certain areas to preserve the character and fabric of the neighborhoods are very important. And so being able to relook at these things to make it a little bit more easier, but still being able to preserve that character. And then unpredictable approval processes, right? Being, you know, being rung around, the ringer, you know, makes it difficult, having to go see three or four different people, three or four different times is not supportive for our community and helping them achieve what we want to achieve and build what we want to build. And so looking at this. And then lastly, again, increasing our capacity and communication barriers, right? Getting community buy-in because St. Louis has such a, that has such a stark and just a, a bad historical narrative, right? We're fighting to really include the community, to bring their voice in and allow them to be in a city that they want to be in and live in, and giving them station to provide opportunity to help do that. Again, developer capacity, increasing their capacity to help us do the work. We understand that the community is going to be our forefront for helping us move forward with this mission. It's not all big box, right? We want to increase infield, we want to support rehab. And so how can we increase our developer capacity and really make it more simple for them to move throughout the process? Heightened coordination, right? We've, we've heard that St. Louis has been a fragmented city, or we, at least we've experienced it ourselves, but really interdepartmental coordination, really bringing ourselves together and being on the same page to target and focus our investment to really see economic growth. And again, a coordination between the city and its partners, really enhancing that communication leverage that we have and really being able to provide a platform for buy-in for not just city departments, but even additional stakeholders that are in the ecosystem. And so that's one of the things, these are the three, these are the three levers that we want to pull and the barriers that we want to kind of remove as you see going forward through this application. Oh, oh, sorry.
He just did three or four slides in one.
Sorry about that.
I wonder actually if the next slide is a, yeah, great. The best place to do this. So the first bucket of proposed work, if you will, is very similar to what was in our application last year. So number one, update the zoning code, and I'll describe that in a little bit more detail in a minute, in a minute. Number two, do a comprehensive review of historic district standards, not to reduce them, eliminate them, that is not where we're starting the conversation, but rather to simplify them, make it, make them easier to understand and a little bit more consistent with our zoning policy as it's updated. Number three, affordable housing design books. So as a way of jumpstarting people's use of the new and I sure hope this is the idea, new and improved zoning code, to create a book of sort of pre-approved plans where people could kind of off the shelf, grab these designs that fully comply with the new zoning code and other regulations and just get going. So no questions along the way. That's the idea. And then number four, the affordability policies update. I'll ask Noel to speak to it.
Well, I'll speak to it more when we get to that slide, but in short, it's about calibrating our affordability policies to the city's diverse housing markets. Right now, we have a one size fits all, and we want to develop an array of. Uh, and we want to develop an array of different, uh, products, uh, for the city's different markets.
Great. Let's, uh, do the next slide. Um, I think we're going through, yeah, one at a time. So a little bit more detail on each of those proposed activities. Very similar to, um, what was proposed in our first, um, application. I think all that has changed here is that we are, um, a great deal closer to doing this. We have. Um, on its way to the board of estimate and apportionment right now. Um, a contract representing a first phase of this work and we're asking, um, HUD to, um, match the investment that the city has already made. In this work, um, with additional funding support. Um, and I, I think the other thing that has changed here. Um, is that the Strategic Land Use Plan is very fully formed, nearing completion with the potential for adoption in January. Um, and then I would say the third thing that changes, we've built a little bit more staff capacity in our ability to, uh, manage this very complex work. So I think the focus as described is what we have, um, intended and imagined all along. We've communicated through the Strategic Land Use Plan process at great lengths with. Um, a whole host of people in the community about the opportunity and need for this. There's a lot of excitement and eagerness for this work. And we are doing it. So, um, yeah, very much focused on removing barriers to and promoting. Diverse mixed income housing. This is a very clearly expressed. Goal of the Strategic Land Use Plan and we'll explore every tool in the toolbox to do that. So already committed between the first phase of zoning work and the Strategic Land Use Plan process, one point nine million. Um, and we are requesting from, um, HUD an additional seven hundred fifty thousand. And this work would be done in very much close collaboration between. The Planning and Urban Design Agency, which I represent, but also the zoning section of the building division, which administers the zoning code and has a depth of knowledge. On the ins and outs that will be really critical in this process. Next slide. Uh, so that's, that's number one. And I, you know, I hit on this earlier, but, um, historic district standards update. The idea is not to, um, reduce or, uh, weaken the, the level of. Um, commitment to historic character in our neighborhoods, but rather to update, clarify and simplify requirements. And also take into account some of the things that have kind of grown to be more core priorities of the St. Louis community. And something we have a greater understanding of here in, you know, the three, in some cases, four, uh, or even five decades since. These original ordinances were written, which are to balance priorities of affordability. Climate resilience in terms of energy efficiency and renewable technologies that can be part of renovation and new construction. And then also preservation, the core, um, goal of these historic district standards. The cultural resources office has already kind of taken a, a step in this direction by doing some work to. Um, there, they've begun to do some work to establish a little bit of a template. That can be used for these updates, but this request is to, um, help them continue that work by, uh, working with. Communities to actually make those updates. Next slide. Third thing here, I think I already hit on this in more detail than I, um, intended to earlier, but. This idea of an affordable housing design book with pre-approved designs, floor plans and other resources. Think what's key here is that these would be ready to go off the shelf. And that they would be very user friendly. So as soon as somebody, um, had one of these, they would not have to worry about a single approval along the way. That's kind of the north star with this idea. And, um, we're aware from other communities that this has been a really successful and exciting. Tool to communicate and inform about land use policy updates. So, you know, we, we update our zoning code. Great. But having a, a book like this could help people really engage with it and hit the ground running. This would, um, in order to succeed, have to be done in close coordination between. The many groups that, um, touch on housing development and we envision this work to occur in that manner. So you can see. PDA or the Planning and Urban Design Agency would, uh, lead this work, but in close collaboration with. Building Division, Community Development Stration, Housing Commission, SLDC. Honestly, there are probably others that belong on this list in order for this to be the, the kind of products that would really cut through. Um, the confusion and work for, um, kind of across the board in terms of city approvals processes. Next slide.
Well, I think up here, uh, to provide a little bit of detail on our.
Policies update, uh, as I mentioned before, uh, the purpose here is really to, uh, calibrate our, our policies to the city's different markets. Right now we have a one size fits all policy for our for sale, uh, housing that we develop. Uh, essentially, uh, there's a loan agreement, um, but that. Loan is forgiven immediately upon sale to the low to moderate income homeowner. And then the only restriction that the city has on that homeowner is a five-year, um, requirement, uh, not to resell it at, at market rate. Um, or not to sell it to, uh, at, at market rate. Um, and in fact, even this five-year requirement is, is not particularly robust because it's secured typically by five thousand dollars of down payment assistance. So the problem that has emerged, this is a really good fit. Let me say this policy works really well in low market. Areas where if there is a sale at market rate that is significantly higher, um, than what the, um. Then, then what would be affordable? That's honestly probably good for, for juicing the market and getting higher comps and stimulating the private sector to invest. So this policy is designed essentially to get the afford, the city per HUD rules, we, we invest in affordable housing. But this is designed to pretty quickly, um, turn it into market housing, um, within a few years. And again, that works really well in low market value areas. But the problem is what we're starting to see in some, in some geographies, in particular in stronger market geographies. Um, in like Benton Park West or the West End is that if we build a home, uh, that sells for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's every incentive for that homeowner to turn around and resell it at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, or three hundred thousand, and they may have to repay a few thousand dollars, but at the end of the day, what that means is that, well, that's great. For that individual's wealth building, um, it undermines the long-term affordability of that neighborhood. Um, and we need to balance the, those competing, uh, values and equities. Uh, and so some things that we can explore that other cities do, uh, is that they make the recapture basis, uh, for the homeowner, not just that down payment assistance, but the full subsidy, right? So if the home costs three hundred thousand dollars or three hundred thousand dollars to build and it's sold for one fifty, then the basis is. The full city investment, um, although obviously we'd never want, um, the individual to. Be underwater and in no case would they be required to pay more than they, they stand to benefit from the sale. But it would disincentivize the, the sale. However, we could explore other, uh, options as well, including equity share models where. Now the city and the homeowner share in the upside, uh, and the downside, um, of, uh, put, uh, of a potential sale. And finally, ground lease or land use restriction, uh, models, which give the city even more control and mean that. Uh, effectively, uh, the property could become affordable in perpetuity. Um, and so there's a variety of different, different models and there, they make sense in different geographies. For example, in geographies which are, have very strong markets and the city owns very little property and it might make sense to explore a ground lease. Um, where the city can ensure that this property is now affordable just about in perpetuity. Um, but that will only work in very strong market value areas because otherwise, uh, a ground lease is unlikely to be attractive to a developer. So there's, uh, a lot of, uh, uh, tensions here that we are navigating. We're beginning to navigate it. As part of our consolidated plan and market value analysis. And that's where the match, uh, comes in, uh, because we have funded. Uh, a market value analysis with the reinvestment fund as well as our consolidated plan with Lisk. Um, but we need additional funding frankly for attorneys, um, and, uh, and. Uh, and, uh, financial analysts that can help us really calibrate, uh, our, our housing products, uh, to the housing market. Uh, and develop, uh, attractive, uh, and, uh, and functional, um, housing products. So with that, uh, I'll move us forward, uh, because we are going to be kicked out of this room in about twenty-five minutes. Um. Oh, yeah, we're, oh, we're gonna be quick. Yeah. Uh, next is filling gaps for strategic implementation, uh, and specifically if we move to the next slide, we have just a single. Program here. Last year we had, I think, four or five different programs. We've really focused it in. And what we're proposing, uh, is, uh, that we focus resources, uh, in one of the city's demonstration areas. Um, along, uh, Martin Luther King Drive. Um, it's a priority for a lot of different reasons. Um, it, it's a priority, uh, because it's, uh, near grand, uh, and, uh, the highest transit, uh, bus, uh, line in the city. Uh, it's near a series of investments that the city has made into the monarch, um, which, uh, which is a mobility hub and will function in a way as. City Hall North where a lot of city offices, the Office of Violence Prevention, uh, of the land bank, the city land bank slate and others will be located. Um, and we have actually, uh, over a hundred million dollars, uh, in development. Uh, of city subsidized, uh, or incentivized projects along MLK, um, and we're seeking to really. Um, drive the residential market, uh, here as well. This is also an area that, uh, has been the subject of substantial planning. Uh, the North Central Plan, south of MLK, uh, was recently completed and adopted by the Planning Commission. Uh, and, uh, as we move forward, uh, the planning department in partnership with state, local stakeholders like For the Ville. And others are undertaking, uh, new planning efforts. And so the, the key here is that we want to be proactive. Typically, the city's funding processes are reactive. We say we have this funding available and we invite developers to pitch projects. Here we're saying, we have a vision for this neighborhood. We, we have, uh, a set of parcels that the city already owns. Um, that, that the land bank already owns. We have resources that we're committing to it and we have clear, a clear idea of. The number of units, uh, and types of units and the mix of for sale and rental units that we want to see. And so we're flipping this, uh, process on its head and that's what's innovative here. So we're being very focused. Um, and we're, uh, inviting developers to propose innovative, um, low-cost types of, of housing. Uh, that can be both new construction and rehab, um, but we're very interested. And in fact, this builds upon. Um, work that we're currently doing. Um, the match number actually in the slide is out of date. The, the real city match is six point five million. Um, because that's what we're committing, uh, towards the redevelopment of LRA property, uh, with a focus on this geography. And we currently have a design competition, a request for qualifications out, um, which, uh. Housing developers and architectural firms can respond to where we are inviting, um, the most innovative ideas, whether that's modular or three D printing. Or container homes or something we haven't even thought of yet. Um, and that's the kind of work that we want to, um. Drive, uh, with this, uh, affordable, focused affordable housing production and preservation line item. Uh, with that, I will toss it to Dylan, uh, to close this out.
And lastly, to support the work that we've committed to, um, we have to continue to increase our capacity to move. These programs and products forward along with, uh, continuing to engage with the community, um, through community planning process. So he goes to the next slide, we can talk about the ongoing action planning for affordable housing. Uh, Mary Emma's talked a lot about the Strategic Land Use, Use Plan. And so we are actually, um, going through, uh, community meetings and, um, and engagement right now. Um, as they are tightening up the plan. Um, and so I, I won't speak to a ton about it, but, uh, um. We are continuing to, to engage. Again, uh, our neighborhood planning initiatives right now, as Noel mentioned, we are in a, uh, a planning, uh, planning process with. The Ville, Greater Ville and Kingsway, uh, East, um, neighborhoods right now, as we are continuing, uh, to grow and expand and really build that community trust. Um, through the planning process. And so as we, uh, continue to, uh, to plan from this end, we want to engage the community. Uh, with what they want to do. And lastly, uh, really supporting, uh, the development of the National Geospatial Intelligence Agency. Um, through what is called the Project Connect Initiative. It's really just promoting and coordinating investment along with, uh, uh, inclusive development for the neighborhood. And the six, the six neighborhoods surrounding, uh, the actual, uh, project. And so we really want to bolster our communication efforts and really. Um, uh, be in tune with the community and their needs as we, uh, really grow the city together. And so, um, yeah. Uh, next line, please. And then lastly, um, with the, with the efforts and the plannings, uh, not plannings, but the programs that we want to deploy. We know we're going to need extended, uh, capacity. And so, um, we want to, uh, plan for a community engagement specialist. That will be housed in the planning, uh, PDA, excuse me, uh, small developer liaison that will be housed in, uh, CDA. And then as well as a program manager, uh, that would be housed in CDA as well. And so all of, uh, these positions, as you'll see, have been cut down from our last year's proposal, really to support our targeted efforts. Um, and really, uh, drive the work that we, uh, we really believe, uh, the city, uh, needs to work, move forward. Uh, and so briefly, uh, just want to review, go over our budget. Um, I, I don't, we don't have a ton of time, but I will. Um, leave this up for response and comments. Um, uh, but as you'll see, we, our, our request, um, different from last year's around. Seven million dollars, uh, six point nine million dollars. Uh, and we plan to leverage, uh, with all of our available funding, around eight point six million of that dollars in support of, uh, our engagement efforts.
And I, I'm noticing as we're, uh, speaking here that there are a couple typos on, uh, this budget page that we'll correct and, and be sure to post the updated one, uh, on the city website. Um, with that, we'll open it up, uh, to, uh, any questions from the public.
Or comments or feedback.
Well, we have, uh, about four attendees, so anyone can, uh, just go ahead and put their. Questions in the chat or raise your hands and we will go live. So we have a question in the house in the room. Go ahead.
I, I mostly just want to thank you because. I've had conversations over the last six months and I'm learning, learning, learning. But I learned more in the last hour. I think it's helped me put it together. Because I'm pastor of St. Joseph in Makita Parish and we're working with all the Catholic parishes and agencies in North City. To try and find how can we help in the most strategic way that supports existing work. Ongoing plans. And I think our imagination is spinning really well with the person. So what, what I need, I think what we need is like that design book was best, like, step by step. We're willing to put some skin in the game. Where do you want us to land? Which block do you want us to build houses on? Do you want it to be for seniors? Do you want it to be for families? You know, so that we can be in concert with you and, and. Just find our niche in the larger.
Yeah, to repeat for, uh, the, uh, online audience, because I don't know how clearly that you threw, uh, the, um. The comment was regarding how we might coordinate with community stakeholders, uh, including the organizations, uh, uh, in order to more. Be more focused in our efforts to drive transformational change and catalyze that sustainable change and responses that, uh, we're excited to hear about, of the work, uh. The, this recent work that y'all are doing. And I think that, uh, part of it's here is, is a proposal for deepening collaboration, um, with, uh, the public. Do we have questions online? I think we might have, uh, a question. Thanks for those. Alrighty.
Also, I, you know, you're welcome to, um, submit comments to us at any time up to your submission. And that, the deadline is October fifteenth.
Is that right? So we would love to receive any further comments or feedback. Um, I'm going to say. By the fourteenth to ensure, uh, well, no, no, no. Do, do we have a more specific schedule? I'm so sorry. I want to.
Actually wrote that written comments will be accepted until October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Um, I know that the deadline was extended as well for the grant, so.
For certain people.
Oh, uh, I don't. Yeah, I don't know why that's what it's on the website. Um, but let's say October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four at five P M.
This, yeah, just, I wanted to say this is not your last opportunity. If you're watching this video, um, kind of after the live session or just upon reflection, you want to share more. Um, don't hesitate to reach out, um, to, uh, the information on the contacts. That's kind of associated with this grant program or to any of us directly.
And Tommy, what's the best?
Mail address to submit comments to.
Um. I believe. Um, in our notice and online where the application is posted. Uh, it's CDA at citywebsite.gov, CDA at S T Louis dash M O. It's cda@citywebsite.gov, cda@stlouis-mo.gov.
Thanks, Tommy.
I think there is another question here. Is there or will there be opportunities for. Community organizations to partner on implementation of what we're proposing. I'll just say though, it's probably more nuanced depending on the activity, like big time. Yes. We are been proposing each of these things to. Be something that we do with community organizations or something that we're creating a new tool for community organizations to use. So they can do their work more more easily. Or their ongoing kind of planning and strategy conversations. That, you know, we're trying to build our capacity to do a better job working with community partners. So. I hope. That is a helpful way of framing it.
Read on all counts, all I would add.
Certainly, there'll be opportunities to engage with all of the planning processes, the zoning reform and and the code updates. And all of those will be publicly facing processes informed by public comment. There will also be an opportunity for housing developers. And manufacturers and architects to respond to our. Whether it's a design competition or a request for proposals. Which we issue to. To really award the the funding provided that that we are awarded by HUD. We would allocate those funds through. Open competitive processes which qualified developers could respond to. And and I'll also note that we would then make selections. We we want to take this opportunity to invite the community. Into the evaluation process because there's some. Some insights that that you can only understand from living in the neighborhood. And and although that community input won't be dispositive necessarily, it will certainly inform. The final selections.
Yeah, I don't see any more hands raised or questions.
Great. With that, it is 5:03 and we will adjourn this public hearing. Thank you all very much.